Called the regular meeting of the Acton School Committee December 11th, 2012 to order at this time. And an adjustment to the agenda is student recognition for the Mayan Project with Elise Miller and students.
I am so excited that these folks can be here tonight. And especially since it's on TV and we have a selectmen present because this is a bigger scope than just what the Acton Schools can do to support the development of their students. This is a community effort to support students as they go forward, develop citizenship, to keep in Acton and to generate in Acton a wonderful and continued learning environment and society. So I'm so excited. Mayan, Maine Youth, I forgot, Action Network. It's a statewide project and I'm proud to introduce Elise Miller and she will facilitate this with her students.
This is all theirs. They know what they need to do and they're ready to do it.
Okay.
Okay, go.
Thank you for providing us with the opportunity to go to attend the Mayan in Augusta and thank you for hearing us tonight.
We're going to start by introducing ourselves. I'm Hannah, I'm in grade eight. I've been going to Acton for nine years. My favorite thing to do is sports. I play basketball, soccer, softball, lacrosse, and I love social studies.
Well, I am Caleb Randall, I'm in seventh grade. I'm in band in chorus and my favorite subject would be language arts.
I'm Kyle. I have been in the school for 10 years. My favorite thing to do is drawing. I am in chorus.
I'm Lily, I'm in eighth grade. I've been going to the school for nine years. I love to sing and play sports. I play sports in both Acton and Sanford and my favorite subject is social studies.
I'm Anelia, I've been here for five years. I'm in grade, I'm in seventh grade and I like gym.
I'm Melissa, I've been, I'm in eighth grade and I've been here for nine years. I'm in the Acton Yearbook Committee and I see the Mayan. My favorite subject is social studies.
My name's Rachel, I like to sing and play guitar. I'm in eighth grade, this is my sixth year at Acton and my favorite subject is social studies.
Okay. Our last workshop we did in Mayan, we were told to come up with a plan that we wanted to do to help our community and we made a poster to present to you guys and this is it.
The issue that we want to try to resolve in Acton is the usage of drugs and alcohol towards the older kids. The root cause of this, we believe, is that there isn't enough activities provided in Acton for the youth. And our evidence is that we have been told by kids on the buses that they have heard high schoolers talking about drugs and usage of alcohol. Our vision is to see more options for the Acton youth within our community. And our solution would be sidewalks, late buses, or rec center. The rec center would sort of be an area where the kids could gather and it'd be like a social area where they might be able to have games like foosball or air hockey. And we also thought of an idea of movie nights.
The late bus would be for the Sanford kids who live in Acton, well, the Sanford High School kids that live in Acton who would like to do other, would like to play sports and do other after-school activities at the high school. And we would also like to present to the eighth graders in Acton the activities that we would, that they have in Sanford for them.
We think it's important to promote kids from Acton to be involved in Sanford sports. So we thought that having a parent-student information night for the eighth graders that will attend Sanford was a good idea. We'd invite the Sanford High School Athletic Director and maybe some Acton athletes from Sanford to come and share the sports provided and contact information for coaches and tell us about the summer camps they offer that can really help you a lot when it comes to sports.
We could also invite the youth council and/or key club member to share after-school activities with the kids at Sanford or here to participate in. And the information that can also provide, provide information on SSYA and SUSTA programs. This provides like activities out of Sanford High School for the kids to apply.
In addition to having things in Sanford for the kids to do, we were hoping we could bring some things in Acton. Like for instance, we could have the YMCA have a lot of the seventh and eighth grade students, you know, help out and then handing, helping hand to younger students with like homework and crafts. And also the, like freshmen from high school go to, or in their volunteer hours. The next thing we thought of was a gym club at the Acton Town Gym so that kids could get active and be doing things other than drugs and alcohol. And lastly, the YMCA classes in Acton, we were hoping to offer some other classes for kids besides just sports like martial arts and yoga.
We would also, we are seeking some of the community members to come in and teach the older kids maybe how to cook, sew, and build birdhouses and shelves and that kind of stuff so they'll have something to do after school instead of going home and being bored out of their mind. We'd also like to have a coffee house at the town hall or church. Just a place where everyone on certain days could go and talk, have some food if it was available, have coffee and just hang out in general.
Gathering grounds.
Yeah. And a hiking, and a hiking club, like just after school, some of the kids could go out and hike around on trails and other stuff just to be outside and stay entertained.
We think it'd be a good idea to hand out a survey, not only to Acton students but to high school students to see what types of activities they would like to include in their lives. We also think it'd be a good idea to have a speaker come and talk to eighth graders about anti-tobacco and anti-drug use. And we think that we should have an older high school student come and talk to us because it's more influential to us when someone closer to our age is talking about things that either they have been through or things that they've heard about instead of an older adult that could tend to be boring to younger students.
No offense.
But you know who you are.
We'd like to thank you again and hope you have a safe holiday.
Very good.
Awesome.
Does anybody have any questions I'd like to ask of these young people?
I have a question.
Yes.
We've heard some very good ideas. What I'd like to know is, is this presentation an ending or is it a beginning of sort of making it happen?
Beginning.
What's next?
We're asking for your help to take these steps in action so that we can start doing something and not just getting ideas.
Now, you wanted us to build sidewalks in Acton?
No, that was just an idea. We were focusing-
No, because I had that idea when I first moved up here because I'm from New York where the sidewalks, and I went, where's the sidewalks? I can't even walk up here. So I understand exactly what that is.
Yeah. We're focusing on the late bus with you guys.
The late bus.
From Sanford High School.
And then we have a speaker that we could, we could look into this, having a speaker come in and putting out the survey. Those are all certainly very doable things in the very near future.
I would be very glad to meet with this group during one of their lunch periods and bore them to tears with my support for where they need to go next.
Oh, that's wonderful.
But most importantly, I think they were asking to have the late bus included in next year's budget to support Acton students in the athletics over there.
Well, we start talking about the budget next month, so we can look at that.
We'll take that under consideration.
Is it possible, do you got, how often do you meet?
Usually every once a week.
Okay, so this is, you'll be meeting in the future routinely. So I can only speak for me, but what I would find helpful is, in your presentation, I heard a lot of really good ideas, some free, some expensive. But it'd be great if we, what you're doing is you're making a proposal. So, and a lot of times when you go to a body that can make the decisions about a proposal, you want to put it in writing. So you can actually, what you just said, put it on paper so that we can actually look at it and deliberate. If somebody can take notes, I can tell you what to put in the proposal. Somebody got a pen or paper or?
You can write it right on the document.
Yeah, if you want to. Basically, just I would suggest including these things because the more information we have, basically you're making, you're making an argument you want us to do something. The more information you can give us, the more likely we'll be able to make a decision that you want.
And is it okay to share that with the selectmen as well?
Sure. We don't have a selectman here.
He's from the Warren Finance.
Warren Finance. I don't need the promotion.
So he's the man. He's the money man. Be nice to him.
So it sounds like you guys have done a lot of research. So this is, I would say two pages, one to two pages. Describe the problem you're, you've identified, a little bit of the background, what you see as the solution, the steps to put the solution into place.
Or solutions.
Or solutions, because it might be, you have a variety of ideas. And to the great, the, don't go crazy, but to the extent that you can, because for example, like sidewalks, the more information we can have, the sooner we can make a decision. So if some of these things have costs, if you can do some research on what the cost would be. For example, the bus, I like that idea. What's the cost? What would be some of the details? So if you put that in writing, one to two pages, here's the background, here's the problem, here's our solution, this is why we think it's the solution that we should take place. We have it in front of us, we can actually have the conversation to actually do what you want.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We did have a late bus for high school kids for quite some time. And the reason that was cut from the budget is because it wasn't, it wasn't being used. People weren't riding the buses. We had, it had, it was a big bus.
It was like two to three children.
It was a big bus and it was making those runs for maybe one, one kid or maybe two. And the other reason that that didn't seem to work out really well was because different sports have practices at different times and a lot of the practices-
Or if you're in band.
And some of those things don't come right after school. So the late bus didn't work for all those activities. So when we had to make budget cuts a few years ago, we looked at everything and where the money was being spent and the reason, really the main reason that the after-school, the late bus was cut was because it simply wasn't being used. Kids were riding with other kids, they were riding with parents, they were riding, had their own cars or whatever as they got up into the higher grades. So that's the reason that that bus was taken away is because it wasn't being used. So.
We have a gym in town, right, that building in front of the town hall, you know that?
Well, that's one of the suggestions that they'll bring forth to us.
Right, I know. But I mean, the building is there.
With their notes.
Working backwards, when would we want to deliberate this? So, and when would they need to submit the written proposal to us so that we can do it in a time?
I would say by getting it February.
That we would need to decide?
Yes.
So what's a reasonable amount of time? I know, it's good to have a date. So what would be a date that you think would be reasonable to?
Like January 30th, you're thinking?
I'm not, I don't, I don't have a particular date in mind. I know it's helpful to have a date to, we've got some more, you know, if you meet every week, you could actually work to get stuff to us as soon as you can so we can talk about it.
If you can get it to, get it to Mrs. St. Seer and then she can get it in our-
In your package.
Package to deliberate, okay? So if you could do it by the end of-
The first meeting in February.
End of January, then we can have it for our February meeting, which would be the second Tuesday in February. Okay?
And does that fit, you were saying that your number one objective is the late bus?
Yes.
Is that, is that correct? So put that first in your proposal, so make, you know, put that front and center on a little pedestal. That's for next year, right?
Yes.
So this timeline works for you?
Yes.
Okay.
And we are, we're going to be negotiating the bus contract this year as well, correct?
Yes.
Do we, do we not own a small bus anymore?
No, we don't.
Okay.
You guys did an incredible job.
Good ideas, very good ideas.
We need a motion to accept the report of the Mayan group.
Okay, I'll entertain that motion.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the presentation and report of the Mayan group with much appreciation and thanks.
Great job.
Okay, good to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Patten, I've got a lot of points tonight.
Yes, he did.
Can't wait to tell him when I see him.
I'm really sort of familiar with this project because it started in Sanford as an outgrowth of the vision and the strategic plan. And it created places like gathering grounds at St. George's Episcopal Church and the safe after-school activities that the kids are engaged in. And I think it would really be who of the Acton kids to have these students participate. It's just, it's really made a significant difference in Sanford in terms of what you do when you're board.
Okay, okay. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, then I will look for an approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting from November 13th.
Well, I just wanted to say on number six, page three, number six, last paragraph, I believe we said the replacement of the chairs, I see this is messed up so I can hardly read it, the replacement of chairs be added into the library budget for the upcoming year. I think we kind of said the capital improvement fund is where we went with that. That it shouldn't come out of-
The library budget.
Yeah, isn't that what we said?
Mm-hmm.
So cross out library budget.
Cross out library budget.
Capital plan. Mary, where? Page three, number six, in the last paragraph, the very last sentence. Because we were talking about it would come out of the library budget, but that didn't make sense because it's a capital improvement. What if we got chairs in the first grade? What if we, you know, so it would be more of a capital expense than coming out of the library expense. Okay, so take out library budget? Yeah.
Take out library budget, capital improvement funds. Or budget.
Other than that, I would accept the minutes as written.
Somebody want to second it with that adjustment?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes as printed with that one change from library budget to capital improvement budget. Any further discussion about the minutes? And if not, all those in favor? So moved. Any comments from the public?
I have a question.
Okay.
And that is, do you have a feel for the timing of the first budget? I just heard February, but do you have a, is it nailed down at all or is it still kind of floating?
We're going to hand these out tonight.
Okay, so we do have a budget-
We do have a suggestion.
A proposed, a proposed budget schedule.
So January 8th.
Is that, he has a copy of that?
Okay, so at the turn of the year then we'll be sort of mobilizing.
Commencing to begin to start.
Commencing to begin to start. I like that. I like the way you put that.
Not just anticipating beginning to start.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Communications and correspondence.
I have one piece of communication for you and it's the cover page from MSMA School Law News. And the policy committee is going to be working on a number of policies in the future that are having to do with the use of and abuse of social media. And this is just a summary of current practices and current thinking from a legal perspective. You don't have to read it now, feel free to take it with you.
It's interesting.
But it is a very interesting dilemma and I want to commend Michael for the work that he has begun. I guess it is quite an intense and invasive policy delivering document.
It's only going to get more complicated.
Absolutely. That's all I have for correspondence.
Then let's move on to staff reports. Superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report is a document that looks like this. There's just three brief items on it. Just as a follow-up, you know that a couple of weeks ago, we proceeded, we participated in a no child left behind audit of our programs, Title I. This district receives Title I funds and Title II funds. There are other districts that receive Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, Title V. But we're basically into Title I, which supplies your literacy development course, and Title II, which is staff development. And there are some things that we need to update and develop. We need apparent involvement in Title I program, updated policy and manual. And yes, we do need to have a LAU plan, which is a plan in case you have students that move into Acton who are students of a second language. And LAU has nothing to, it's not an abbreviation, it's the name of a person that brought a lawsuit. So don't ask me to determine, define what LAU means. But anyway, we need to come up with an ESL protocol, an ESL policy, just in case. Policy committee was supposed to meet on December 13th to look at updated policies, the use of electronic and social media devices. And I believe we are now going to do that on the 18th at 7:45. And that will be an ongoing work in progress.
I wonder, Jen, I think we got a confirmation from you or not?
Because I'm waiting for a confirmation of my confirmation so I can send. I had something else, I'm trying to move it.
We're looking at the 18th.
Yeah, sorry. Pretty much everything's full, so I'm trying to move things so I can make it.
Okay, and as you, as was hinted at, work on the 2013 budget has begun. And Tricia and Carleen have some timelines in mind and they will share those with you. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Well, it doesn't conclude it, does it? Because there's something in front of you or is someone else going to talk about it?
Oh, yes, I need to do this. Two things about this wonderful trophy. You have a wonderful group of students that participate in the LEGO tournament every year. And this is to signify that an Acton team and the Robot Performance Award came in third place of 67 teams.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight competitors. And also they have a longevity award. This is beginning their 13th year of LEGO competition.
Awesome.
And Pat Rose needs to be commended and your support for going forward with this. And this will be in our trophy case before Carleen moves tonight. So thank you.
Great.
Thank you for reminding me.
Okay, principals report.
My report starts off with the exciting news that the kids out YMCA after-school program is up and running.
Why?
And-
It was quick.
It was quick and it's been a very positive start with more parents inquiring every week. So started with three last week, there's a fourth child already joined, expecting two more next week. And more and more parents are contacting the YMCA as well as asking the school for information. I think after the Christmas break is a natural time for many parents to have dropped their current daycare or after-school help situation and making the transition to leaving their kids here. It will allow kids who want to stay after school for an activity, but can't get picked up at four o'clock, to stay after school. We have in, right now we have the basketball programs, but we also have some after-school activities like drama and the cooking classes and things that happen in the later months, you know, February into March. And that'll allow kids to have that opportunity who might not have before. They are now starting a waiting list for before-school care.
Wow.
They need to have at least five kids signed up before they open it up for the before school. So that is still something that has not yet happened but could. So I'm really excited that the staff from the YMCA has been excellent. And I, you know, wrote in my report, Ryan Pease, our office manager, and Andy Brazier have had to do a lot of organizing and collaborating to make sure the space and everything was ready to go, a lot of communication with staff and parents, and it has just been fabulous. Boys' basketball and girls' basketball teams are up and running. Brenna Whitney is the girls' basketball coach. It's her first year coaching. I actually observed this afternoon. Dave Cody helped out this afternoon. Coach Erickson for the boys has also come and helped Brenna. Tracy Scully, the athletic director, has overseen many of the game or practices to make sure things are running smoothly. And I'm very pleased with the attitude and cooperation that's going on amongst the teams. Last week, if you happened to have seen anyone at the school, chances are you saw some bizarre clothing choices. And if you didn't, please make sure you look at the student council's bulletin board because Jen Goodman was generous with the snapping of the photos and posting witness and evidence. It was great. The kids loved it and the kids love it when the staff joins in. So we had crazy sock day, we had crazy wacky hair day, we had colors so that you could see a whole group of class go by in a color. It wasn't hard to tell, it wasn't easy, hard to guess which color they were. So it was just great. We did a contest in the, in the office that if staff came in and had evidence of participating, put their name in a raffle and we raffled off a $5 Dunkin' Donuts gift card. Michelle Reynard was our lucky winner. Just a little extra incentive to keep the silly school spirit going. So it was great. The vision committee, you know, the meeting, the first meeting was very positive. We have another one coming up next week. Really excited that we're moving forward with this. Along with this, I was given the name by Kevin, Bill Bryan, who met with us last week, much of the administration staff, to talk about people's roles within an organization and how having clarity around that can also help us with our vision and again, moving staff forward to a very positive, hardworking culture. So really, really excited about looking at this. Those of us with staff members under us, you know, really want to look at that leadership piece and get some additional training on how to be more effective leaders. So we have, it was a no-cost consult by Bill Bryan and it was two hours and it, we were just-
It seemed like it was about 15 minutes.
Wasn't it? It was just awesome.
Isn't he amazing?
Yeah, he really had us excited and not overwhelmed, which is really amazing as a leader to, because there's so much to do. You know, you really, you want to do your best, but there's a lot of new information out there of how to do it better. And he really seems like a great resource for us as the leadership team to, to access. So we're going to investigate further. He will be sending me a proposal of what he can offer us, because as much as we were interviewing him, he was interviewing us to see if what he had to offer was what we needed. So I am expecting a proposal by the end of this week with an outline of what things are, time, investment, the cost. But I'm really excited, he really seemed to be speaking what we, to us, what we needed.
Just as a reminder, December 18th at 6:00 is our next vision strategic planning meeting with Mary Jane. We're just going to have light snacks. But it's the 18th in the cafeteria.
Right. So all of that is just exciting work. Very, very pleased with, with the information we've been getting and the conversations that are being shared amongst staff. Fire prevention finally came through, had some great support from the fire department. That smokehouse was here, kids enjoyed it. And Pete Smith, the fire chief, said that he was really impressed with how much the older students had retained after having not had the information for the last few years. So he said he was really impressed with the amount of questions they could answer correctly. And on a final note, we had the, had the- And on a final note, we had the, had the much-beloved and repeat performance of the Hampstead Stage Company. That was just before the Thanksgiving break. They did a production on Treasure Island. And again, what's amazing is you've got two characters who have you convinced they must have a staff of fourteen when they put on their performances. It truly, the kids, you love the little ones, who are convinced they are different people. It is absolutely wonderful, you know, and how do they, how did you change it to all those people so quickly? And, you know, it just is so cool to see imagination in a time where we're talking about the wonderful benefits of technology. Of course, things are done for you on those screens. But here, it was a live performance which required a lot of attention and a lot of imagination, and the kids really enjoyed it. And we're grateful for the Hampstead Stage Company to come back year after year.
They're awesome every year. They really are.
Really cool. And it can be different actors. You know, it's not always the same people, but the results are always phenomenal. It's just, it's really enjoyable for the entire school community. So we're glad for that.
Upcoming?
Well, report cards just went out. Good news and bad news to be had. Hopefully mostly good. Our early release day this coming Thursday. Well, here's an example of the benefit of the Kids Out program. Those kids will have the extended coverage from right after the school dismissal at 12:30 until the six o'clock time. And there's no cost change for the parents that belong to that program. So that's wonderful. Staff will be engaged in two things. Ed techs will be engaged in learning about safety...
Safety care, right.
Safety care for, around restraint and student needs. And the teachers will be learning more about performance-based education. So excited about that. And despite the rumors, there are actually five full days of school next week. I caution parents not to believe their child who tells them that there's no school on that Thursday or Friday. There is, it's a full day. So we have this week, and we have five days next week before school break. So send your children.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting, and the weather is going to permit.
You've been lucky so far.
Yes, but it is five full days. And I do know that there's an occasional child who might convince a parent that we don't have school on that Friday, but we do, so.
Don't they talk to anybody else?
What's that?
The parents, don't they talk to anybody else?
Well, you know...
They're all here now on TV.
All they want to say is, "My teacher said." My teacher said, yes. I have apologized for all those kids who said that, "Well, my teacher said."
You've seen that commercial, haven't you, with that little girl that gets up in the morning and she watches the TV for the news? And finally, she sees her school get on there and she starts dancing around. She gets up real early to watch the TV, see if it's going, it's a very cute commercial.
Yeah, I love that they're all excited, it's a snow day, and they realize it was a Saturday anyhow. I don't know, they can't get out of bed on a Monday, but boy, they can bounce right out of bed on a Saturday.
What did you tell me now, the teachers are going to be covering on that, performance-based?
Performance-based education. So it's all the standards.
Yeah.
Trying to understand how it's going to impact them as classroom teachers.
What are they doing that?
That is this Thursday afternoon?
Their early release day.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Tricia, anybody have any other questions?
Joy.
Joy, you're up.
Okay. So I have a pretty short report. It looks a lot longer than it is. As you know, we submitted the local entitlement application in October and actually September. It actually got submitted and then back to us and resubmitted, but we finally got approval. So I was really excited about that. And of course, we're using the money as we speak necessarily. And then compliance, we were commended by the main department for meeting the necessary requirements in all areas.
That is not easy.
I know, I was really excited. So the compliance indicator performance, they take certain indicators and they kind of pick those several out, and they look at your data through Infinite Campus so that they can determine whether you've met the requirements. And of course, all the reporting, it's all done through Metta. Still learning the main thing. And so we were really excited about that. And then special ed, student enrollment. I'm going to send another report next month, because we have the December 1st sort of investigative, investigated the, all of the student enrollment. And there might be a little bit of a difference when we report back, because that's a more, that's a deeper investigation. And the high school, although these numbers were, we thought they were accurate, I think there's going to be a little discrepancy in the high school.
Lower, hopefully?
Yes.
Now, I know Jeanette has asked for the update on the high school kids and how they're doing. I don't know if that's a, was that a special ed thing or the regular ed?
No, it's regular ed.
Regular ed. I sent another email today to the principal with a CC to David Theharde, saying we would very much like to establish a workshop maybe in February after, you know, first semester to see how the ACT and students are doing in general.
Yeah, we used to get like a monthly report, when the report cards came out, there used to be a steady, yeah, well, you know, I don't know, it just kind of went away, you know?
Well, I can tell you that I've attended some meetings on students at the high school, and the students are doing quite well. Some of our most involved students are very big, special...
The special ed students you're talking about.
Yes, very, doing very, very well, so I'm very pleased. And I can, I can provide more information on that for the next meeting if you'd like.
I mean, it was just the kids that went there in general, you know? It just was very interesting how well they were doing, yeah.
And to keep our connection, at least that, for the high schoolers, to be one of the connections.
Well, and I'm trying to do... I'm sorry.
I'm looking for the general meeting in February, but I do think, Joy, that would be welcome.
Yeah, I'm trying to make contact with Stacy Bissell on a regular basis so that I can know what the students are doing, and particularly for transition, because that to me is the most important eighth grade to ninth grade year, especially going to another town, another city. So we are starting to meet on students now for that transition so that they can be really well-prepared. And that was based on what happened last year, you know, I'm kind of improving on that. I thought it went well, but I'd like to improve on that.
Can I add, when you ask about how they're doing, one of my questions would be not just the academics, but who do we have participating in those after-school activities?
Sports and...
Yeah, and the clubs and, you know, I know that last year with the class elections, class officers, we had quite a high number. And I don't know what it is currently this year. But it would be great to know as we're, as we're going to support what we can with the Mayan thing, you know, find out what kids are getting involved in what kind of programs, and again, what can we do to promote that? Because I know that the success of a high school student does often greatly rely on participation in something beyond the classroom studies.
And they have so much, and it's just, you just don't know that. I mean, they have so many activities.
Yeah, they do.
And you should at least do one. It doesn't have to be sports, there's so many.
Right, there's so many other, but I don't know if it's not a well-known club, we don't always know.
Our kids have been involved in key club, I know that, they've been involved in that. They've been involved in music and drama and...
But we won't...
And a lot of, a lot of sports involvement, lots of that, about what it...
I will ask that at least one of the grant participants, because they still have that huge Nellie Mae Foundation grant that provides a lot of activities for kids to be here to talk a little bit about what's offered and what they're doing.
I'm just saying, for the eighth graders going up, I don't know if they know, I don't think my kids knew.
Well, I mean, they've had some dramatic changes in the activities that have been offered over the last two years.
Okay, maybe that's why.
And I think, I think if I could just add, I think it's important that parents, parents are very anxious about that transition. And once kids get there, they're so excited to be there, and they do so much better than anyone could anticipate. So I think that's the word we want to get out to those eighth grade parents, not to, not to be anxious.
Thank you.
Carleen's got a lot for us.
I'm done, good. I'm done. Respectfully submitted. Respectfully accepted.
Carleen's been busy.
Okay, it's pretty busy in central office right now. We've been working on applications for GT, doing the civil rights report, which was done by as many people as ever, Betsy and Trish and Joy and myself and Pat Reeves and Kami Davis, and we all had a little bit in it. But we finally got it to say success, and we're pretty happy about that. I'm working, right now, I'm working on the insurance renewal application for MSMA. Hopefully, we won't have any problems with that. During Christmas break, we'll be here all four days because we have to close books, finish payroll, get W-2s and 1099 set up, and get the payroll for January 3rd already before everybody comes back, so. We're hoping people don't keep wandering in and out of the office, so we can get that done. All the quarterly reports will then need to be done after that. And as you know, I emailed all of you a copy of the art report. If you can't open it, or if you'd like a paper copy, just let me know, and I...
No, I read it, it's very boring. The first six pages were just who they were, I mean, it went on, I thought, oh my lord, why did they, let's get to the numbers, you know?
I thought, I'll print this out, and then I looked at it and I said...
No, no, I didn't print it.
No, no, it'd be a whole, a whole cartridge and a whole remit paper.
I got three copies. My mailbox, I'll be glad to share. You're not sleeping at night, this'll do it for you.
Okay, so it's, you know, if you have any questions about the audit report or any of the others, and that's about it. And you have your financials on the other side. They're still doing pretty well at this time.
And I want to again commend Joy and Tricia and Carleen for getting together and looking at what you folks have done in the past and figuring out, you know, okay, how are we going to do this and what's going to be meaningful, but also what can we do given the time constraints?
What are our payments to the high school now? Did we set up three payments to the high school or four?
We're still quarterly.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're running a little over $200,000 right now for payments.
And what is the GT application?
Gift and Talented?
Yes.
What's the application?
They have to apply to be accepted for the Gift and Talented program.
For reimbursement purposes.
Yes, so we can be reimbursed for services.
Okay.
How many students do we have in the high school right now? It was 132 at one time last year.
I think we dropped down to 122 right now.
I think it's about 120.
Really?
In what?
About 125, no.
No, I'm talking about the students at the high school. It was 134, 35 just last year, the year before, and we're down to 120 something now.
We had a couple of kids move out.
Well, that's okay.
And few became, went to private school that weren't planning on it, so. But we're still keeping track of them in case they move back in from the private schools.
Okay, thank you, Carleen. And go on to, is this acceptable? Have you had a chance to look at the...
Yeah, but there are times when we do change things, you know? But that's basically what we have, yeah.
It's a good start.
Carleen had the basic framework. Basically, when I looked at it, I just double-checked to make sure we didn't hit a February vacation like we did last year by accident.
She did all the work.
Yeah, she double-checked.
You did, you always work on it.
No, it's true. No, don't, I, she just makes us look good.
I know.
If it has numbers attached, it's Carleen. I just, I make sure she makes sure I don't mess up.
It says the word budget.
Yeah, it says budget. It's, it's Carleen. But, you know, just to try to make sure that the, the general flow and timetable is reasonable and to avoid February vacation this year. We had one last year that it just didn't make sense for, for any kind of extra involvement to be covered during a school break.
And the warrant finance committee have to fit things in too.
Just the only, the only tricky part might be depending on what the workshops are for the town proper. So, I mean, last year, there was a little bit of weaving going on, but, you know, we'll assume it'll work.
Well, did we get our licks in first?
Yeah, that's right.
You did.
We're on the calendar.
That doesn't mean there won't be problems.
One of the things that I did make sure of, and when I talked to Jennifer Rue, I let her know was, when we did the final vote last year, it was right before, right during school vacation week.
Right.
And that was a problem, so we made sure that we're going to move that away from there.
Right, the April vacation got hit with the voting.
Yeah, April, yes. So we need to make sure we have more people here.
Well, it depends when Easter comes, and that...
No.
Easter's the end of March this year.
Is it always the third week, April?
Yeah, Easter and April vacation do not always line up, but the number of parents that might be taking their children away somewhere on April vacation, again, you don't want the voting population to be out of town.
Easter is March, April.
Speaking of out of town, that first meeting, I'm not here, January. Be on a boat.
See?
I expect a good souvenir.
Hopefully, it's something like a Reba.
Disney cruise.
Oh, that's so nice.
Andy?
My report tonight will be brief.
He always does.
It will be. Met with Ken Paul to obtain a permit for the project that was approved last month. Have talked with Pat Stevens, and I'm hoping as long as the weather holds, by the time we meet next month, the project will be near completion. The weather has held really well, obviously. It's allowed me to do some things on the grounds that I was glad to get caught up on. The administrative team has met on several occasions in the last month. As Trish said, we met with Bill. We also had a CRT meeting this week.
CRT is crisis response, for the audience?
Yep, crisis response meeting. And also, we did meet earlier in the month as a team to discuss the strategic planning. I find that the administrative team meetings are very productive and are always steering in a positive direction. The Beal Christmas tree, as you noticed maybe when you came in, is up. Had the opportunity to go down to Brian's place and cut the tree. I sent Jan a picture of the tree at night, lit up. She was very appreciative of that. Looking forward to Christmas vacation projects and looking forward to the budget. Sorry, I heard it here first.
I'll assist your hackle.
I have a personal thanks, though.
I do look forward to it.
For Andy. Thanks to, I believe you helped my wife the other day.
I did, I attempted to.
No, you did, I have to say, beyond the call of duty, my daughter accidentally tossed out her expander. So she was looking through the trash looking for it, Andy helped out, so.
We gave it a good old college try, but...
More than that, so thank you.
You're welcome, no problem.
What was the end result? It's like you gave a try, it was...
Expander's somewhere on a truck or in some landfill.
It left this morning, actually.
I understand.
Should have done it again before it pulled out.
Okay, okay, Michael?
All right, my, my report's going to be sweet, short and sweet as well. As mentioned, I have edited and revised about 20-something policies, forms, rules, a number of documents. And looking forward to meeting with the policy committee for the next year or two to get them passed. I'm still in the process of revising the technology plan, and I might need to organize a committee of some sort to lay down some of the text or the wording of the, of the plan. So I might need to request a committee be built for this of our staff or peers, even the public. I started the E-rate process, I filled out the Form 470, which begins the process, and E-rate will hopefully cover our phone line costs. A couple thousand dollars that we pay a year for our phone lines should be covered by E-rate funds. And in the coming months, I'll be filling out Form 471 for our internet and our telephone lines. I have been working on Infinite Campus developments. I'm looking into implementing assessment, data gathering, and collection of students so we can quickly look at a student and see what they got on their NWAAs and see where that falls on, you know, the NWA scale. We can also crunch numbers and, you know, pull, pull data and analyze, you know, where we, our strengths are and our weaknesses are a lot easier. I'm far from opening a parent portal, still trying to get the bugs and the bells and whistles out of, and if the campus up and running correctly. Still trying to get the bugs and the bells and whistles out of, in, in the campus up and running correctly. The website, I'm still working on developing a procedure to upgrade our website and not break anything such as Kids Corner, which is a huge resource in the computer lab and in classrooms. Joy and I are looking to buy iPads after Christmas, if there's any money left, to hopefully get a better fun, you know, buying power. And the budget request form has been enabled. We haven't had any submissions yet besides mine. But the budget process is up and running and ready to go.
At the teacher level? Where they can stop their wish lists.
And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Ask for a motion to enter to accept all staff reports?
Make a motion to accept?
Second.
Been moved to the second. That staff reports be accepted. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five of all. Let's go to committees. Policy Committee is going to meet, correct? Have you met at all?
Just said they don't.
They're going to meet on the 18th.
Are you available on the 18th?
I'm waiting to hear back. I have to try to move something, it's 50/50. Mike, I'm sorry about Miss Griffin.
All right, mine's...
It's a crazy time of year.
How about Long-Term Planning Committee?
We didn't meet this evening due to the executive session scheduled prior to the meeting.
Okay. And the 18th is Policy Committee?
Yeah, I did. We did put that down.
Trish just handed me and I apologize for this, but... Oh, you know what? It's on the backside of this one. That's why I couldn't find it. We have a request for maternity leave unpaid.
Partially unpaid.
Partially unpaid. I would like to use 20.5 of my paid days throughout maternity leave, assuming the dates will be February 11th through May 13th. And this is from Kristen Gallop.
You can take that up on the new business.
I'm for sure. Sorry, I had it. I just wanted to make sure I didn't see it.
Okay. Unfinished business?
You have almost all of the job descriptions. The only one that I don't think you have is cook. This one?
Yeah.
We have cook.
Okay. And these are, this is it?
We have them all, I think. Did you make that?
Good catch on me.
Change, add that little thing on.
I had it, I had several copies of them. I sent the wrong one.
Yeah.
Now, you don't need to accept these. These are just the current working documents, subject to change as circumstances prevail.
So, we don't need to vote on these?
No, you just have them.
We have them.
They need to be disseminated within 30 days now to staff. Okay?
Okay, any other unfinished business?
Do we have to give the paper to the staff or can they go online instead of wasting paper? You know what I mean?
I think it's in the process of...
Mike can put them on Google Docs.
You know what I'm saying? Instead of wasting paper.
I agree. I think we all agree.
That's fine.
I did get to give the last ones to the union rep.
I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, you could give, yeah.
Yeah, I've already started organizing the Google Docs into departments so you guys can...
If you can, I'm just trying to save it for you or two.
Yeah. I think, I think it makes sense to give the...
Yeah, the union reps.
To give the union reps paper copies, hard copies. And then if anybody else wants to look at them, they can either look at them through their union rep or they can go online. They're online. That makes total sense.
So, when, when would they be told or notified that this is now your job description?
Within 30 days.
Because this is not, okay.
Within 30 days of right now, now that we're having it.
Right now, okay.
So, we need to have some sort of conversation or plan as to who's disseminating with whom.
Well, you're having a faculty meeting, can't that be presented?
Okay, but I'm not gonna disseminate with faculty meeting my job. That's me doing with their job, right?
I'd like to be the one that disseminates these. Because they need a, it isn't policy and it's not collective bargaining. It's a standalone entity.
And each one should be aware to be able...
If they're all, if they're all listed, if they can be posted on the Google Docs, if they can all be listed where people can go on and, and read what the job descriptions are.
I'd be glad of the faculty meeting to tell them what's coming.
They need to be told a whole bunch of them and let them know where it will be.
Okay.
Okay.
When is the next?
Yeah, you know, I understand what you're saying about the administrative level ones, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they just, in order, if it's gonna be done within 30 days, we need to look at, okay...
What's the plan?
What's the plan? I'm sorry, I'm just, that's the way I, you know, who, who speaks to whom and when? And, you know, keep in mind that we've got that Christmas break thing that's interrupting within the 30 days.
But is that a right if she presents then?
Yes.
Yeah.
And maybe we can discuss it further in our administrative committee.
Okay. I didn't, because I didn't know if maybe you guys had to or not, I didn't know. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any other unfinished business? Nope. All right. And a new business, we have the second reading for several policies. And my recommendation would be that we take these as a group. We took them as a group last time, that we accept them. So, I would look for a motion to accept Policy JKAA, JKAR, GA and GA Highly Qualified Teacher and Policy JECA. Proof of presidency, I would recommend, I would ask for a motion to accept all of those policies now as a second reading.
So, moved.
Jeanette, was that you?
Yes. That was Jeanette, that was kind of a second.
Okay, now, now I wanna introduce the maternity leave for Kristen Gallop.
Wait a minute.
I need to vote for her.
Okay, so, any further discussion on the policies?
So, the second reading is final.
The second reading, they're, they're adopted with the second reading, yeah.
We can always revise.
All in favor? Five and oh. Okay. All right, now we'll go for the request.
She didn't see that.
We'll go for the request now. You probably, you saw it and you pack it anyway, so. I go ahead and...
You can't stop the baby.
Go ahead to that.
Do you want, just to make a motion?
So, basically, she's asking for extra time off, but without pay. She'll take the amount that's given with pay and asking for extended time beyond the six weeks without pay.
So, we will have to advertise for a substitute or you have somebody that you call on or...
We'll have, we'll look for a long-term sub, right?
Once you tell me this is okay, then I can put it in the paper and make it magically appear.
Magically appear.
I know the email to Carleen. It'll happen.
We won't have to disseminate this. We're all set.
Anybody have any, any issues with this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept her proposal here.
Request. And to grant her the...
The unpaid leave.
The extra unpaid leave days. Second, anybody?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Thank you. And, and are there any, is there any other business to come before the board? Yes, I hope you all recognize the letter from Elise Miller. She was the lady that was here tonight with the kids. She sent a letter of support and appreciation for Pat Reeves and the work he's done in the GT program. And I think we would all agree that Pat Reeves has done an excellent job working with the Gifted and Talented. She's, she's right up there at the top of her, top of her game with, in that department, so.
Well, she's also an excellent example of veteran does not mean no more new learn. She's an outstanding example of what a veteran...